About the evidence that has been properly noticed.
The County Board of Supervisors September sixteenth meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places and posted on the county website on Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty five. In addition, on Thursday, September eleventh, at two twenty eight P. M., the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice and meeting to supervisors and media via email.
Pause for.
That constitutes proper notice.
And roll call, please.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Lee Borndahl.
Here.
Cam Garvey.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Tony Johnson.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Francis Duncanson.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
Keith Karpinski.
Here.
And John Bonaprise.
Here.
Please join me in allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this time, one nation, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda in discussion. There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. Need a motion on the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as presented A and B.
Motion made and seconded. In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. Any public comment? Going around for public comment? Well, we move to our audit presentation. Number eight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Jonathan Sherwood. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen. I appreciate the accommodation of me having a scheduling conflict for last month. So I was in at the July meeting for the previous committee meeting. So in the interest of brevity, I'm going to go through the executive audit committee summary and try to keep things fairly high level for you. If there's any additional follow up questions that you have, I'm happy to stop as we go along. But again, just in the interest of brevity and maybe trying to get some air moving here in this nice sauna here of a room for us this evening. So again, appreciate your your time here this evening. I want to thank everybody in finance and all of the other department heads that I end up working with and interacting with through the course of the audit. Their prompt responses back to myself and my team definitely make this whole process much more pleasurable as much as that can possibly be. And it's much more efficient as well for us. So very much appreciate all the the work of the county staff. Before I dive into the financial information, there's just a couple of comments I'll have for you on the overall form and function of the, you know, about ninety five page plus audit report, I'll just really briefly touch upon. The first being the actual audit report or audit opinion of your financial statements. There's only about three to four pages of this whole set of financial statements that technically belongs to CLA, and that's our audit opinion. And we issue what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion over all of the facts, amounts, disclosures of your financial statement so they can be readily relied upon by yourselves, internally decision makers, as well as external parties taking a look at them to see what your financial results for fiscal year twenty four and being. So the unmodified opinion is the highest level assurance from an outside independent agency. So we're very pleased to say that we can actually issue that sort of opinion over your financial statements. Also, through the course of our audit work, we take a look at the internal control structure of the whole county and say, okay, if there's any issues within there, would there be anything that would raise to the level of significance that need to be brought up to governance? And there are two repeat findings. So these are things that should be very common to those of you that haven't heard this presentation yet this year. They're known as material weaknesses, and that's the nomenclature that we use as independent auditors. There's, again, two of them. One is material audit adjustments, and the other one is limited segregations of duties. So again, these aren't necessarily red flags by any means, but they are required to be discussed here briefly. Material audit adjustments just basically means that if we didn't propose those journal entries and we didn't make those journal entries, your audit would not be able to be materially relied upon in order to make decisions. And then, secondly, the limited segregation of duties needs to be through limited segregation of those duties through the entire transaction cycle across all departments of the county. So from an economic standpoint, it wouldn't be feasible in order to hire CPAs and beef up staffing enough in order to completely eliminate those two findings. So again, nothing that is raises to a level of a red flag for anybody, but I always do take a little bit of time in these presentations just to put that in the back of governance's mind because governance is a compensating control over the whole process. So your involvement, your review, your approval of things is a mitigating control over those two findings. Then, just real briefly, we do also take a look at the compliance of the county in terms of the federal single audit, federal dollars coming into the system, into the county, as well as state grant sources, making sure that nothing is out of compliance through there. So there were no findings to report there for us. And then there are a few other things that we take care of as part of our audit work as well. Obviously, compiling the financial statements, we'd also assist the county in compiling the highway annual reports. We assist in the filing of the financial report form, as well as the final reporting back to the federal agencies, the data collection form, which is a federal filing, which that needed to be completed by the end of September. And all of those filings have been submitted ahead of deadlines, and there's no issues in any of that compliance work for you. Real briefly, then, on.
Can we go back?
Yeah, absolutely.
How many times this repeat thing? How many years has that been going on?
I've been involved in some form or function out of the county here for sixteen plus years, and you've had these findings and a combination of these findings going back as, you know, even prior to me. So it's nothing that there would be no corrective actions that you would absolutely need to take in order to completely eliminate either of those two findings.
But in your opinion, should they be corrected?
The the one that would be probably most likely to be corrected would be material audit adjustments, and that's something that we work with the county every year in order to see if there's any typically the area that's most impacted there would be grant reconciling, making sure that when those grant dollars are actually received, making sure that they're aligning in the proper period versus, you know, maybe they were recognized in a future period and they needed to be put back to the prior year. And then some of the other ones are like the involvement of the WRS system. There's a very intricate disclosure that's required for your financial statements. It doesn't really impact any decision making that you're making at the fund level, but they're required for your financial statements. So we assist in making that. So we've been working with county staff for the years in order to reduce the number that we've actually needed to post. And you're hovering around anywhere between seventeen and twenty some odd entries every year. And it does, it's not terrible overall, but it's it gives you some sense as to how you're doing. But if there's even one entry that's grand enough in scale, that's material material enough, it would then obviously trigger that finding nonetheless. So, yes, Brad.
Jonathan, would you comment? Those two material weaknesses that you're talking about, are they common amongst counties our size in Wisconsin?
In my client base here in Western Wisconsin, ninety eight percent of all of my clients have both of those findings. So of the ones that don't, maybe the material audit adjustments, it would be not included in some of maybe the smaller, less sophisticated or less complex organizations. Again, it wouldn't be anything that I would comment to you tonight to say, you take X, Y, Z action, and I can guarantee that next year that they'll be gone. And again, to me, there wouldn't be any specific step that I would recommend for you tonight that would say, if you do, if you do them, that you're going to remove them, and then you're going to be in a much better position next year. So there's, in my opinion, there's no impact here to still reporting these, including in your in your audit for a future period. Did that answer your question for you?
Yes, it did.
Perfect. And then, in terms of looking at the the general fund, I'm kind of taking a peek around to see if anybody's following along with any sort of handout. So I'll just try to keep these higher higher level comments nonetheless here for you. But the financial performance of your general fund, there's essentially three main criteria that we look at from an outside perspective to see what is the fiscal health of your of the overall general operations of the county. Take a look at the unassigned fund balance, which is your reserves for one year that you can then use that are unrestricted or unassigned reserves to meet any unplanned for future over budget budget overenses in a future period. Compare that to the total operating expenditures of the general fund. That's, you know, the total amount that goes into actually operating the county for one specific year. And we compute a ratio, and that percentage that you that we calculate is eighty six point nine percent. So you've got set asides, you've got reserves of just over thirty one million dollars as compared to the total expenditures of the general fund of just over thirty five point seven million dollars of the year. So you do have eighty six point nine percent of your total operating budget setting aside in your unassigned fund balance. The county does have a minimum fund balance policy. You want that minimum number to be at least forty percent of your general fund expenditures. So you're clearly meeting and exceeding that budget, and I would consider that a fiscally healthy fund balance. The trend over the last number of years, and this actually, you know, kind of dates around COVID funding and a lot of state and federal funding, this percentage that you're seeing at the county level has been fairly high. I would characterize an unassigned fund balance fairly high is that's the the level that you're currently at. And that's due to the influx of federal and state funds. And as you then start meeting with additional capital expenditures and some of this spend down and this delay in spending down some of this money due to supply chain issues and that kind of like these this unassigned fund balance has been trending down over the last four or five years. So keep that in mind as you go through your budget process going forward. If you do have capital type items that are worked into your budget, you're likely going to start drawing down this unassigned fund balance. I will direct your attention to page fifty five of your audit report in the future. If you want to take a look at the full fund balance and those are looking at when you're going through your budget process, you can start looking at what those reserves are and how you're planning then to spend them down in future periods. So how we're doing in twenty five and how you're going to do in twenty six or what you're projecting to do going forward. So that's kind of the bulk of my presentation that I wanted to kind of point you in that direction. The other note on the budget that I wanted to bring up for you real briefly is you've got a total or in twenty twenty four, your budget, your budgeted total expenditures was just over thirty three point seven million dollars, and you came in again at the actual expenditures of thirty five point seven million. You're roughly one and a half million dollars within that budget. So you weren't, you're technically over budget overall for twenty twenty four, but overall, you're within four percent of what your budgeted target was going into twenty four. So you have a very prudent budget process. So continue those that practice. Your administrative team does a diligent job of pulling together your budget and kind of, you know, forecasting and foreshadowing where your expenditures are going to land for the year. And that target has been, in my opinion, a very good or close target overall. Real quickly, you do have a couple of other funds that make up the financial financial reporting of the county, things known as the special revenue funds. So that's item number two on your executive audit summary. Within there, these are all the reserves of the surpluses that will be used as carryover that will be used for those specific purposes going forward. The revenue sources that are set aside must be used for those specific purposes. And if anything, in my opinion, the only way that I'll comment on anything is if anything significantly negative or has been dropping and trending down, you would then need to take a look at those activities. And if the outside services or outside revenue sources aren't great enough to meet that expenditure, likely you would need to either increase fees for those for those projects or then cover them by county levy. The only thing that really stood out from my perspective was the dams special revenue fund that has a negative balance in twenty twenty four of one point eight million, and that is strictly because you have a timing issue of the expenditures occurred and needed to be recognized in twenty twenty four. However, the reimbursement or the revenue was not matched up to that until twenty twenty five. So we couldn't recognize that revenue because it wasn't granted or made available until a later period. So that hopefully will be corrected now in twenty twenty five.
Is the Highway Department the only non-lapsing department?
When you say non-lapsing, I will speak on your your Highway Department here in a minute. That is known what is a proprietary fund or it's a set aside fund. It's a proprietary or business type activity. So it's a good segue into the next section of my presentation for you. Absolutely. And actually, I do have two other things to comment before I get to your your enterprise funds. First is your debt service fund. You have some reserves or set asides that are meant strictly meant for all of the long term debt, principal and interest obligations for the year. During twenty twenty four, you paid just over two points, two, just over two million dollars in principal and about two hundred and two thousand dollars in interest. Those are the the requirements in your debt service fund. Capital projects funds, there were two outstanding during twenty twenty four, one for the recycling center and then a small residual amount for the parks and rec department or specific project set aside. You have about eight hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars that are set aside to be used for those two capital projects uses. And then we've got your enterprise funds. So you do actually report two enterprise funds or business type activities, the first being the nursing home for Golden Age Manor. The big takeaway there is the, you know, how, what did the operations do for twenty twenty four? And you did have an income or a change in net position, which is a positive income for the year of just over one point one million dollars. So that showed significant improvement as compared to twenty three. The main driving force there was total occupancy for Golden Age Manor increased around ten percent for the year, and that basically accounts for the, you know, significant improvement at Golden Age Manor for the year. Finally, now to, sir, the Highway Department, which is a set aside, its own independent fund. It's known and classified as an internal service fund for the county, which that means that primarily the purpose of is to serve the county itself and all the county owned roads and that type of thing. You obviously still have some additional activity that goes for state highways and some of the other municipalities in within the county, but primarily the Highway Department is meant to serve the county roads. And you're looking at the financial results or the change in that position in your highway highway fund. And you've got just over five hundred and five thousand dollars of income or a positive increase in your fund balance within your Highway Department. That number is a little different than when you're talking your your general fund because within your Highway Department, you do also have things like depreciation expense, and then there's some other accounting noncash items that go into that. So if you would exclude or you exclude those numbers, that five hundred and five thousand dollars would actually probably be about a billion dollars more than that because of some of that depreciation expense and noncash items that are hitting your Highway Department within that number. So overall, it's more than breaking even for itself for twenty twenty four. The operations of your Highway Department are strong. The last type of activity that you have out there are known as your internal services funds, such as your yourself funded health insurance fund. And the the main concept here is that if the fund balance or the change in that position has been negative for year after year after year, what is the county going to do in order to either address the premiums, the charges to employees going into that fund versus, you know, comparing it to the claims or the claim experience that you've been running? So the the trend here for the last number of years has been to keep claims or to keep premiums low because you were basically had a very strong surplus in your health insurance fund, and that was by design, I believe. The county went through a study a number of years ago and to help kind of draw down those reserves. And my understanding has been that the projection of the claims experienced in twenty three and twenty four here have basically exceeded that study. So that spend down occurred a little bit quicker than they were initially expecting it to. And I know that it's been something that has been paid attention to very closely by your admin department in order to make sure now that going forward in twenty five and twenty six, your claims are still remaining a little bit higher than average, that are coming down to the historical averages. But in in comparison, you're also then more than likely going to be hearing about potential premium increases in order to support your health insurance fund. Last but not least, in terms of items here for you is your long term debt obligations. Pope County here does have some long term debt outstanding, but in all things considered, it's a very low dollar amount. You are statutorily restricted on the total amount of debt that can be issued. You're actually only using two point five percent, two point five percent of the statutory limitation. To be honest, a county would never ever get up to the statutory limit because it's, you know, based on a percentage of total equalized value of the whole county. But you'd be very unpopular politicians if you'd ever even approach, you know, sixty percent of the total limit. Most of my counties that I deal with, I would consider quote unquote highly leveraged, anywhere between thirty to forty percent of that of that statutory limit. That's when you're going to kind of kind of see that the principal and interest amount is becoming a little bit unpalatable to taxpayers. So you're at two point five percent. You have some outstanding debt that's there. And I always bring up this part of the presentation to say that long term debt at a governmental level governmental level is actually used as kind of a budgeting tool to assist in keeping property tax rates or property tax levies fairly flat from one year to the next because there's a function of your budget of your levy limit worksheet. You can actually levy some of that or technically you could levy one hundred percent of all of your principal and interest payments could go right on top of your levy. So that is a budgeting tool in order to kind of smooth things out so you don't have wild increases and decreases in overall levy limits. So I'll defer to your finance team there to go into some more of the intricacies of how that actually import impacts the total levy limit if you'd have follow up questions for them. That's all I have for you this evening. I tried to speak fairly fast and got a little segue there, so I apologize. But is there any other further questions that I could help address or address any comments or concerns?
So I believe you said earlier, we have a forty percent fund balance resolution, but I believe it is fifty percent. Is it, Matt?
It is fifty in policy.
So I'll make sure I update my notes. Fifty percent would be the the updated balance. The the outside limit that I would that I typically see is anywhere between thirty three percent up to fifty percent is kind of a general rule of thumb that I would recommend to, you know, a government your size.
What would the number be at fifty percent?
Uh, well.
Approximately? That we're over. Did you say thirty one?
You're at eighty six point nine percent. So if you'd want to get down to, you know, fifty percent, you'd have some capital items that you could spend down out of that. Let me still check here. Being you're at, somebody help me out with some calculations back there, Sherry.
You'd be at about seventeen million.
Seventeen seventeen million dollars. Yeah, in total, you'd want set asides of seventeen million, and you're at thirty one. So, yes, Brad.
Jonathan, is that the designated fund balance that we're talking about?
Yes, that is the unassigned fund balance.
If it's cheaper for us to borrow two million dollars a year, where are we saving or where are we making our three hundred thousand? Passing us two hundred thousand, we should be able to see some sort of revenue on that side of it, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're, if you're looking at it from a long term debt issuance, the it's more advantageous to the county to have long term debt out there to use as a budgeting tool to keep your levy fairly flat and to avoid the sudden decrease and sudden increase. You're not necessarily going to see a revenue outside of, you know, issuing debt and then investing those proceeds elsewhere. You're going to be taking your current reserves, and then those reserves would be, you know, invested there in order to earn any type of, you know, return, in that speak. But having a healthy fund balance as you have is going to do a few different things for you going forward, such as, obviously, you know, outside borrowing agencies are going to give you more favorable lending rates if you would have to go that route. It's going to allow you some flexibility into self-finance for some of those large construction projects or capital items or cover any future deficits that you might see. And then having the reserves that you do, you'd completely avoid any short term borrowings, which can occur as well due to property tax collection process and cycles.
I just have kind of one last halfway's comment question, Stephen. So we've been advised at the city by Baird that, and I guess I want to know if you would agree with this and apply this to counties as well as cities, that right now is actually a time of to be extremely fiscally conservative and that there is potential with unknowns of how they're going to impact municipalities and not to take any chances if you don't have to. It's not a good time to maybe burn some fund balance or something because we don't know what the impact coming down the pike is going to be for all of us federally. So it's maybe not a good time to.
We're all add my commentary on that. That comment would be, I'm in, from my perspective, I'm an independent auditor. I'm focused on normally looking backwards in my profession and seeing and basically giving you the postmortem of what happened with some foresight into what current market conditions are. Baird is much more in the advisory role specifically, so I will defer to some of their expertise there. Me personally, I haven't done a complete deep dive in, you know, on the federal side or the state side. What I do know is at the, you know, in the state side specifically, the the state budget is kind of a moving target all the time. And in terms of making sure that we're financially flexible going forward, I would never, in my personal opinion as well, recommend any of my clients to to look at their fund balance and say, let's just spend it all down and make sure that you're hardened and stay true to fast to your minimum fund balance policy being fifty percent, and you better hit that target or, you know, or else. I'm never a giant advocate for, you know, advising my clients to take a look at that to say, you know, I'm going to defer to your your experience as a governing body, working with your administrative folks. They have the key, their eyes on the moving target of where the the goals and the accomplishments of the county are going to be and the county's best interests at heart, so to speak. So I'm going to defer to your in your internal policies and ensure that their decision making has been properly reported in your year end figures.
And just a clarity on the percentage for the fund balance. In twenty twenty four, it was forty percent. We updated that at the spring of twenty twenty five when we updated the policy. So they correct that, but was not corrected in twenty twenty.
Thanks for making sure I didn't miss it.
So at realistically eighty seven percent fund balance, just an average of other counties that you work with, what they're sitting at is a total fund balance?
So you're looking at unassigned fund balance at eighty seven percent. The the nice thing about computing this ratio is we look at those same three factors of always the unassigned fund balance. And the vast majority of the other counties within Western Wisconsin are greater than your fifty percent, and a lot of that is due to that influx of federal dollars of the last number of years. And then what they what I've seen other municipalities or other governing bodies do is take some of that unassigned fund balance and very strategically designate capital items that they're that they're working on or working through in order to self fund for those capital outlay costs. But in terms of like an overall average percentage, I would probably say the vast majority of them are sixty five to seventy percent likely at looking at those same metrics. Thank you.
Are you seeing any counties with a reserve account balance of eighty six percent assessing other fees?
I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to, you know, what other other fees that they're potentially looking at, you know, going forward. I wouldn't be able to specifically speak to that. I know that overall, the the budgeting challenges of, you know, with outside federal fundings, federal funding grants, obviously expiring and specific state programs expiring and being relied upon counties, that is definitely a challenge in municipal accounting going forward, municipal finance going forward. So looking at potential removing any revenue sources is a significant challenge of all levels of governance.
Anyone else?
Just on page fifty five, we have a COVID relief fund yet. Is that you or do we do that internally?
That was an internal decision to.
To know that it has to be spent by a certain time and things.
Yes.
So that's more for them than you. All right.
Hey. Thank you.
One more.
Oh, boy.
One more, just for the heck of it. How come we get it so late every year? Is there any reason to speed it up or how does it work that it's late?
In terms of in terms of the timeline, the state of Wisconsin, that's audited and unaudited financial report form, that is due July thirty first every year. So because there's so many year end transactions that go into it, you have the first seven months of the year to basically look back and make sure that everything is properly reported back the proper period. So as soon as my numbers are completely finalized and issued, that's when I schedule my board meetings for you. So it's always going to be around that July timeframe for my initial meeting. And then the reason I'm here now in September is I had to schedule a conflict for odds.
Okay. But I mean, that's.
That's.
It's always that late. We're always, we're seven months off.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I thank you.
No problem. If there's any other questions that, you know, come out as a resort of this, you can reach out through your finance department admin. I'm happy to address any other specific comments you might have.
We can find you.
There you go. Put me down.
Good. Good luck for your next year.
Okay. We've had a little. Oh, we're, our presentation for cyber security, there's been some some concerns about other entities being breached. other entities being breached and just some concern, I feel that we can probably hopefully can all be satisfied at the same time with the small presentation. Our presentation of her society wants. Now let's let's call on, let's get a an idea of where we're standing for security for cyber.
Mr. Chair, our IT Director Scott Good will be giving the presentation to answer all your questions.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Scott Good. As you know, I'm the IT Director here at Polk County. The presentation comes up. All right. So first I'm going to go through the current landscape of cybersecurity. Obviously, attacks are on the rise. We've seen a number of different areas being breached. But as you can see, the numbers here, we've got greater than two hundred and thirty five percent rise in government ransomware attacks over the period of April twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, which is pretty remarkable. That has gone up over the past few years as well. So we're seeing a pretty large influx of attacks specifically targeting government agencies. That's local governments, states, federal across the board. The terms of potential cyber attacks, there are forty three thousand plus attacks that were identified through security, the cybersecurity intelligence agencies for federal government that were just hitting state and local governments in twenty twenty four. That's a pretty large number. With that, threats are increasingly being sophisticated. We've got advanced tools that are being used, AI is being used. So AI is kind of being used on both sides of the board. But so we're hitting it. We're using, but we're getting tools on the defensive and the offensive side. It's really trying to keep up with everything, right? The reason, the main reason why we're seeing such an increase is because they're working. If you look at the cost of breaches, average cost of a breach is four million dollars. That's a lot higher than what a ransomware, what the actual ransom is for ransomware attack. That averages about five hundred thousand dollars. So you're looking at about three and a half million dollars of damage control. That's being sucked up by your cybersecurity agencies, your costs for to give people the ability to check the credit reports, that kind of stuff. So the recovery is quite a bit. That's getting the bad actors out of your systems and recovering from backups, all of that, as well as downtime. You've got significant downtime. That leads us really to where these breaches come from or how they get in. It's the human factors. Boys are really your critical line of defense. They're the ones that need to not click on the links or click on the text messages, things like that. So eighty eight percent of breaches are happening from your human factor, from people clicking on stuff that they shouldn't be. Let's leave this in the types of attacks. We've got ransomware, phishing, malware. Ransomware is really when bad actor gets in, encrypts your files. You've really got an option of deleting, starting over or, you know, trying to pay the ransom, get a get a decryption token. And even at that point, you don't know that the bad actor is going to actually give you that decryption key. And you also don't know that they're not going to that they're not going to disclose that data. So you've got, in our area, we really aren't allowed to provide to pay those ransoms. We can be sanctioned if we do pay those. So we've got a problem with that. Terms of phishing, there's that's really deceptive emails, messages. Sure, you're all aware, have all had those emails come to you, the text messages. It really comes down to trying to trick you to click on something. So you can get malware or punching in your username and password into a site that's not yours or that that's not the intended target or where you're supposed to go. So this is one of the areas where AI is being used to present you with a website that looks just like the one that you're normally used to going to. But you've got to make sure you're checking the URLs, checking everything around, make sure it looks legit. There are a few variants of the phishing. There's spear phishing, which is really targeting individuals based on things like reporting relationships. So your manager sends you a email saying, hey, I need you to get fifty gift cards for twenty five dollars for all these people and get them here right away. So it's, a lot of those are easy to pick up. But, you know, there have been breaches where millions and millions of dollars have been wired due to people even getting onto a video call to verify that. And you've got people that have AI personas and they're able to fake that. So there's a lot of things that that to look out for. Whaling is really trying to get your your high value targets, things like executives. Smishing is really just phishing through an SMS text on your phone. Phishing is really is just giving you a call. A lot of this is social engineering. Malware, malicious software, probably familiar with that, viruses, spyware, those kinds of things. We'll go over a few close to home incidents. St. Paul was a really big one. It was made national news. Ransomware attack, as you'll see, all three of these are ransomware attacks. Forty three gig of data was stolen and published. And right now, they they were down for over a month, which is pretty significant for all of your systems to be down for for a month. The only thing that they had still running was their nine one one dispatch systems. So they didn't, they didn't even have the the systems that they're running to be able to check license plates, things like that. That all had to had to go back to nine one one over phones. IL County, that's in Wisconsin here, had another ransomware attack. That breach led to a mass deletion of data. They're still not back up and running right now. And that happened in April twenty twenty five. So it may, it was a severe disruption to land records, deeds, tax processing. There were transactions that couldn't go through. There's transactions that were delayed. So there's, they're still reeling from that. Last year, October, Chavoygan, another ransomware attack, sixty seven thousand records with social security numbers and their state IDs. As far as Polk County is concerned, oh, question?
I just have a comment, a little bit closer to the home, the city of Chautauqua in Barron County. Had an incident where I believe they sent out over a million dollars and they were able to recover that and get that back. But that was one of these scams. They had a big bond payment coming due and somebody somehow played into that, sent the email, they clicked on the wrong thing and the money did not go for the bond payment where it was supposed to go. It ended up somewhere else. They were able to recover the money and get it back and I believe some staff returned.
Yeah, that's, it happens. As far as Polk County, here's our report card. Ransomware, seven hundred and eighty eight advanced malware threats were identified and avoided over the past six months. And seven thousand phishing and business email compromises were attempted and avoided. So those are ones that we found and we know we filtered out. But one thing to contrast that with, over that same period, we had one point two million emails that came into the county. We only delivered five hundred and seventy nine thousand of those. So we are, we're delivering less than half of the email that's coming in right now and that's all being filtered out. So all it does take is one though. So as far as data breaches go, we did have a close call in April. We had coordinator response with our insurance company, Wisconsin County Mutual. We had a risk assessment done. It was determined not to be a breach. But that was really, it's down to human error. We had an issue where addresses got offset and things were sent to the wrong place. So. Things we're doing to protect Polk County. First thing, we've got clear policies, roles, responsibilities. We do have an information security policy that is documented and published. And we use that to identify all of the things that we need people to be doing. These are the things that we've got in our employee handbook. It's giving people their acceptable use, that kind of thing, the things that they're supposed to be looking out for. The, we'll talk about a little bit later, but security awareness training, things that they have to make sure that they're keeping up on to be aware of these kinds of threats. Risk management, we do regular risk assessments every year. We do them through a third party that we employ. We also do them through the Center for Internet Security. So we're doing multiple ones. We also have through CGIS. We do, we get audited every three years for CGIS. And that's another one where I talk about ongoing remediation. We take the, we take all of the things that are identified in these risk assessments and we put that into a process of continual innovation and continual improvement to ensure that we're identifying and mitigating any of the issues that are that come up. And if we're not, we accept that risk and identify what that risk acceptance really looks like. So if that's a critical or a high, that's not something that we're going to really accept. We need to make sure that that's that gets remediated. So as each year goes by, every risk assessment comes, we look at that, we look at the remediation options and we try and do that the most cost effective way. Security awareness training. Every month, we put two security trainings out. And these aren't really onerous. In fact, they're really pretty entertaining actually. But they get the message out about what people need to be aware of and what is currently out in the marketplace. These are things like the St. Paul breach. There is a training specifically about that and it tells what happened and how that gets mitigated. October is coming up and it's actually National Cybersecurity Month. So we have activities planned for the entire month. Every week we'll have separate activities. But the trainings that we do, three to five minutes, two of them a month, so you're talking about ten minutes. But it gives them enough information to be able to thwart these threats. We also do phishing simulations, which means we send out test emails to people to see if they're clicking on them. So we get stats on on what people are clicking on, what people aren't. And they, we have the ability for them to submit those. And if they get a submission, then they get a score. So they can go out, see how many they've they've clicked on, see how many they have submitted for analysis. And for the most part, we don't get a lot of people clicking. If they do click, then they'll end up getting pertinent training sent to them and they can, they can go through that and it's kind of a refresher. We also employ least privileged control. That means we're giving people the lowest amount of access they need to do their jobs. We don't want people to have a lot of excess access because if they do, they can, and somebody gets their credentials, they can do a lot more damage. We also employ multi factor authentication. As you're probably well aware, it's easy to get somebody's username and password on the dark web. And once those are out there, they can be used at any of the sites that you used. MFA directly impacts their ability to do that because they may know your username and password, but they don't have that third token. So they don't have that last piece of information to get in. And sure, everyone in this room has probably gotten a notification from their MFA provider or a number that that they need to enter in. And they weren't aware of that or they weren't aware of a sign in attempt. And best thing to do is change your password after that. Don't use a link. Make sure you go back to your normal, normal locations. Incident response, we have a documented incident response plan and we test that. We test it with tabletop exercises that include the entire IT team. That also includes our cybersecurity vendors and and their partners. So we try and validate and look at all of the different scenarios that we can to ensure that we're aware and we're ready if an incident or if and when an incident does occur. So as we go through those table tops, if we find something that doesn't make sense, then we update that plan and we've got it for the next round. Monitoring and threat response, or actually encryption at rest and in transit means we're encrypting all the data that's on our servers, all the data that's that's on any hardware in the building. So we're also encrypting any of the data that's moving on our traversing our networks or traversing outside of our networks. And the monitoring and threat response, this is probably the where the largest amount of money is probably spent because we have numerous systems that are out there trying to keep us keep us safe through sensors, detection. We have a twenty four seven security operations center that we have contracted to watch all of that for us. So all the antivirus that's sitting on a, that's sitting on PCs, that has telemetry that gets uploaded to another system where AI is used to identify trends, identify possible bad actors in the system and that can get alerted and sent to us or acted on autonomously through our management section and response. So we have a lot of different systems that are monitoring the network, our PCs, laptops, anything coming in, out, a lot of, lot of logging. Then finally, last but not least, vendors and third parties. We do security reviews of our third parties, especially our high top tier vendors. But anyone that is going to be touching any Polk County data, we do a security review of of their security posture as well as looking at the contract to make sure that there is a issue, we are covered from a contractual perspective. But we're also looking for, to ensure that they're also following all these practices as well. Any questions?
So in the policies, are we under that, are the supervisors, do we have that policy? Are we part of it?
Yes.
They've ever handed out to any of us? Probably not. Okay. So I don't want my email to come into here anymore. Is that in the policy? Can I give that? I gave my computer back. That doesn't work. It just died. I don't want my email to come in here. Is that the security risk or is that in a policy or I don't have to do it or what? How does that work?
Well, your email, your email should come through here regardless. Well, your email, your emails should come through here regardless, because it's a .gov address.
I cancel that if I don't want it.
I, I don't believe so.
Why is that?
Well.
Does everybody have one? John, do you have one? Oh, he doesn't have one. What if I don't want one?
I'm trying to be more old-fashioned. I like the world the way it used to be.
Well, the email.
If I don't want that, can I opt out?
Potentially, you could.
Potentially, or yes.
We would have to, we would have to talk about that. I, I can't provide an answer on that right away. But the one thing that you would need to consider is that if you were to use another email address, your personal email is entirely open for open records requests.
I love it. I got nothing to fear. That's why I have to let them have it. I mean, that's, that's the only fear. I don't have it. I'm just saying.
That's, that's not the only.
Here are 10 computers and have 800 passwords. This one changes every week. And there's 10 tests to take and all this. Finally, I just, I almost threw it away, but I didn't.
So what, what I would say is.
Why do we have to have one through the county?
A problem potentially is that that email address that is provided to you by the county is the formal way for the county to communicate formal information to you. If you use your personal email as.
Just use my phone.
Director Good pointed out, the problem becomes when you use the county's email, the county has a way, if a public records request comes in for any information that you're using for formal business, we can go and basically do the work for you to make sure that you are complying legally with that open records request. If you don't follow that, if you use your own email, if you use your own phone number, et cetera, anything that you do, you are going to have to be the person that brings yourself into compliance, which means that if you violate, you're going to be held responsible for anything that you don't report. And that could just be a mistake. But mistakes don't matter in the open records request.
So before this, five years ago, we didn't have it. We only had a phone number. How did we survive?
We do everything we can incrementally to make sure that we are doing things better every day.
We're doing it better. That doesn't mean I have to have all these different passwords and everything and, and can't get any work done. So I'm saying, is it in a policy that I have to have it?
It is in the policy that Polk County employees need to use their Polk County address.
Correct.
And they can't use anything outside of it. I don't know.
Considered employees, are we yet?
We get a W-2, right?
No, I'm an elected official. I get a W-2, whatever.
So the other thing to consider is if there is anything sensitive that is in your, in your packets or anything that's getting sent to you, we can control that access here, and we can control the ability to mitigate somebody getting into that. If, if that gets sent to a personal email address and that gets compromised, then you are the compromise.
This is all public information that we have, so I'm not going to try to hide anything. That's why I said it doesn't bother me, because if it's in our packet, it's public information. That's the transparency we're supposed to have. And now we're trying to hide it again.
And if you are having issues with your computer.
It's upstairs. I brought it in. I mean, it just, Sharon stood the same.
I understand that, but if you are having any issues with any of that, we can work with you and, and figure that out as well.
So just send it to my regular one.
It is safest both for the county as well as for yourself to use your government issued.
We all take chances. The sky is falling, and I'm not too worried yet.
But when you take chances, you're not just taking chances with yourself. As Director Good is pointing out, you are taking chances that you and your personal item could get breached. If that happens, they could program something that sends out an email from your personal email out to everyone within the organization. And theoretically, it could result in an employee thinking that it's a formal, real email from you clicking on it and then breaching the entire county. So you're not just taking a risk.
So they're not, should have that.
And you're, and you're actually.
So that's the same as when we had the cell phones and they said that. Everybody couldn't call each other. We had to be so careful.
You're touching on.
This way.
You're touching on a, an actual breach that did happen at another county where supervisors laptop got, got compromised due to using their own email. That sent out other emails to the organization. That got clicked on and ransomware infected the, the entire county. So.
So to answer your question.
I'm not privy to that much information, Tony, though.
You don't have to be privy to the information. If you're using an outside email address, though, and that gets hacked, that's your official line of communication with the county, right? So then you're, somebody.
Why is it that way? So I mean, now, why did it change that? Why all of a sudden, that's just.
Wait a minute.
The tax that's changed.
Knowledge you change, so.
Hold off on this, you know, this, if.
It's part of our security. So it's here for.
Personal thing that hopefully be able to get together with you. It doesn't involve me or.
It involves.
Johnny, but I think I'll take your advice first as to, as to the use of mine. I, I don't worry about the password. I can't remember the damn thing myself anyway. So the, if we have any other questions that are not, that are concerned, that concern all of us in reference to security, and I understand this is a potential security risk, but that's got to be worked out between you and.
That should be all of us, though, should we?
If you wish, it's true. So anyway, you just continue to go on your presentation, Will. And you, Kim will straighten it up with you personally.
So are we doing enough? Is there more that we need to be doing? You look at these counties in Wisconsin that have been breached, St. Paul, and, I mean, I get it, there's always more you can do, right? To the point you're broke. But are we doing enough?
We're doing everything we can at the moment, as far as I can, as far as I can say. Biggest thing that, that we're seeing other counties do, and we haven't done at this point, is looking at a dedicated cybersecurity professional that's dedicated on our staff to be able to work on cybersecurity projects, push those quicker through. As far as what we have implemented from a technological standpoint, I think, I think we're in a good spot. We have, we have all of the pieces in place that we need from the software to the hardware to, to all those things to give us a reasonable amount of defense. And that's, that's what you're looking for in an organization this size. We can't implement some of the, the large-scale items that you're going to see in, in a, in a much larger organization. It's just not economically feasible. So, but I'd say the, the only thing we could do to protect ourselves more would be a cybersecurity analyst.
So any idea what that costs?
A thousand a year.
They, they run around 80 to 100,000 a year.
Plus benefits.
We have backup systems in place for like payroll and benefits and stuff like that.
We do have. Yeah.
Our employees will still get paid Friday.
Yes.
Every other.
Yep, and we have, our providers are, where we don't have backups and we're using third-party systems, they're required to have backups and, and business continuity systems as well.
And again, the big, the biggest threat is human error. No matter what we train, no matter how much we have in place, it's, it's someone clicking on something they're not supposed to, that's going to expose us.
Yeah. The, the big thing that we have with that is if someone does click on something, and we do get ransomware that starts in the environment, we do have systems that are intended to mitigate that. So if something does show up and it looks like ransomware, and we get false positives on this all the time, it shuts that down. So that's, that, that is, it's not foolproof, but it is, it's the best that we can do at this point.
Have a concern?
I'm the human error. That's why I wanted to take my computer.
Yeah, well. All right, that should handle it. Thanks a lot for your help. Okay, where are we at? Presentation from administration on our budget.
Claire, I'll just say next slide for you, okay? Um, here we are, September 16th, starting the budget process. The, we're at the final stages now. We've been through all the committees with the AFRs and other things. So we'll go over what's in the proposed budget here and how it looks for everything. Claire, next slide. Some of the themes to our current, our 2026 budget with revenues, we're seeing downward pressure from the federal side. Reductions possible for Wisconsin due to the big beautiful bill, the SNAP program, that type of things. Our levy, as, as you all know, moves with net new construction. We don't have the ability to raise that without that. Our income, income investment is downward pressure. Short-term midterm rates are trending down right now with our investments. Um, you'll see that on another slide here in a little bit. Sales tax, we tend to, our past practice and what we've been doing is looking back at the past year for sales tax and not trying to over-project what that's going to be. Be a slide coming up to show a little bit better of that on there. Shared revenue is slight, helps a little bit. We have a small increase in that. Expenses, except for healthcare, inflationary pressures have moderated a little bit. Wages, we're still in negotiations with WPPA, so we'll be closed on that. They meet again October 8th at Gem Gov. Healthcare continues to trend upward. That's a tough one. We're going to look at that also with our increase at 15% for premiums and those. So we still need to be fiscally conservative on that. Next slide. We go through the budgets with departments. This is what we ask. We'll look on the revenue side, recover costs where possible. Look at operational revenue, additional grants we look for. Debt financing, our strategic plan to keep our levy stable is a big thing to get our projects done and keep it where we need to be with the mill rate. On the expense side, examine non-critical positions for hiring. We do this constantly now. Flatten, reduce operating costs where possible. The things we can control, we try to control. The things we can't, we try to find that money somewhere else. Next slide. Variables looking into our 2026 budget. Net new construction netted us about $310,000. Shared revenue is up slightly, 3.4 or 1.25 million, 2025. Investment income is projected to be down about 2.25%, and that's from our PMA advisor, you know, so.
Do you have those dollar amounts of, what's 2.5% mean, dollar-wise?
An increase of, what was that cost, 100?
We've got about, just say 30 million. So if we were at 10%, we'd return 3 million. And so a quarter of that would be, you know, $250,000.
It's not a lot in shared revenue that went up. Sales tax, we're projecting $5.1 million. About, that's what we received in 2024, so we're staying flat on that. Debt financing, again, we're looking at bonding 2.25 million.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
We've got sales tax, and we're staying at the 5.1 million. How are we trending right now compared to last year?
I got a slide coming up on that. Right now, we, we have five, five of the eight months have been down with sales tax. Our first January one was up 87%, which is a huge influx, and we've been riding that throughout the, the year right now. Forward Analytics came out with an estimate yesterday on what they projected for counties for revenue. They showed an increase for us, our projected increase of, to come in on 2026 of $5.6 million for sales tax. We got on the horn and asked them, what about the volatility we're seeing with our going up and down? And they said, if you cannot justify the volatility of your sales tax, dial it back. Be conservative with your estimates, and that's why we're landing on the one, the 5.1. Yeah. The debt financing would be the same as next, uh, next year. That keeps our levy stable. Employee-related costs, pay and benefits, up about 2.8 million. Health plan, 15% increase. I approve 45,000 in additional funding requests for staff operations. WRS is also up, a higher percentage rate this year that goes in there also.
1% is the 2.8 million on the employee rated?
Right now, we're projecting 2.5.
Is that across the board for everybody?
That's across the board. It'd be a 1.5 in January 1 and then a 1% in July. And that's everyone with, the WPPA is a little different pay structure with the union, but we're still in negotiations on that.
I see in the 6.8 that you presented for administration.
No. And then capital expenditures, recommending AFRs. I recommended 3.9 million of over 6 million that was requested by staff. And we'll get to those in a couple of different slides here. Next, next one. This is the big picture of where our revenue sources are coming from. You'll see the general property tax number of $23.1 million. That's in the operating budget. There's an additional 500,000 that'll go to help build the health fund back on that. So you'll see that in another slide here with the explanation. So that's where our revenues come from, 17 million state aids, fines, forfeitures, public charges for services. Next slide, Claire. Let's see, that's why she's.
Yes. Did you say there was, on this chart, because I've not seen it, $500,000 going into the health fund?
Done. The next slide here, I have that.
Oh, okay.
So the levy actually is $23.6 million, but 500 of that is going into the health fund. The 23.1 is in the operating budget itself. With that, with this budget, utilizing all our mechanisms, spending down a little bit of the general fund, our bonding and borrowing, and all our, all our other one, our PTA funds and all this. The mill rate is projected to be at $2.50, which is down 17 cents from last year. So the mill rate is going down. And we keep that flat. Yes.
If we're putting 500,000 back into the health fund from the taxpayer side, how much are the employees putting back in?
They're increasing 15% on their premiums, plus the out-of-pocket expenses are going up, the deductibles are going up, and a little bit of the RX are going up also. Try to build that fund back. But sales tax, this is where Forward Analytics, our projections, we just don't feel comfortable with that projection up that high, being that five, the last eight months have been down. So we are budgeting at 5.1. Hopefully it comes in higher, that'd be great, but writing our budget in at 5.1. Next slide. This is our expenses on budget picture. Public services, almost $27 million, public safety. Over 11 million, public works at, and two, capital outlay. Debt services, that's where we want to maintain our debt services the same. Next slide.
So our expenses are more than our revenues right now, or is that?
Because we're going to show, we're going to show a deficit, because we're going to draw down the general fund. So we won't have that revenue. We're showing a deficit.
You're going to, and what are we drawing it down? What, what debt amount be there?
Overall with that, 1.1. We're going to draw it down.
Well, that's undesignedated fund balance, correct?
That is undesignedated fund balance. And it's very important to keep a robust fund balance. There's several things. Actually, you're going to mitigate any unforeseen circumstances. You know, we have to have a robust levy due to income tax. If people aren't paying their income taxes, or excuse me, their property taxes, we still have to pay the municipalities the full amount. So we have to carry that debt ourselves. We have to cover any disaster they have. We have to cover any disaster that happens, just like in the, um, twenty nineteen tornado. So we have to cover all those costs upfront before FEMA gives them in there. And it helps with our, our bond rate and our interest rates. So keep a healthy fund, and that's why we're trying to manage that so we don't overinflate it, but we keep it where it's at.
What's, what's the property tax at right now that's unpaid? Is that that one million or is it down to sixty-eight? How is that rollover working?
The tax deed is down under sixty, I believe, still. That's, I, it's, it's, that one's low.
Forms, it's always a million. So that's what I'm saying.
That's the, that's the, at the time of the audit, that's the, that's the portion of property tax that happened.
Because the second half is in July. All right. So that's why we're always.
We always got that.
We always had that big gap, but it's, it's right around sixty-eight yet.
Yes, it's at that last number. It's really low.
So it was pretty low.
Next slide. These are the AFRs that went to all the committees. You shall be familiar with this, um, on here. Assessment, funding, continuation, so we continue outside entities to keep us safe on there. Uh, tracking training within HR or compliance training and those, those type of offices. Uh, ADRC has the half, uh, position of a transportation coordinator that's state-funded. Through that, take grade change in finance. Um, that's due to not filling a finance position and those duties going on to that person. Media conversion is out of the deeds office, two cell phones for the district attorney. Uh, changing two seasonal staff for parks from part-time, a quarter to a halftime. Typically, a quarter, uh, seasonal worker is typically your college student that's here for a very short time. We're fortunate enough now to have a couple retired people that can work longer hours into the fall to help us, um, in parks right now. So that's that change. Next slide. On the capital side, we have a video, uh, update for the court hearing rooms, uh, the HP controls for the Justice Center. We have some recycling stuff. We're bringing forward the recycling, um, the conveyor, the truck, the glass breaker, the forklift. And the recycling stuff, that's the stuff we're gonna expedite to get the recycling center up and running faster. We'll pull the general fund. Uh, re-carpeting the child support area, nine squad cars for the law enforcement. Resurfacing the jail showers, that always comes up in their audit, that, um, due to mold and stuff. So we're gonna, uh, mitigate that. With that, the new squads, uh, their car computers are all outdated now. They're, they reached their life cycle, so that's going. Pro West Services contract with a fabric, that's a parcel fabric, um, that ties in with, um, property taxes, next gen nine-one-one. We have a side-by-side for parks and a compact tractor. These ones will pull out of the P-TAG funding that we use for maintenance. And then Highway I is, there's some funding for Highway I out of that same toll. Next slide.
Yeah, cool. How big is the child support area that it's forty-five thousand?
Offhand? I not have that number. Do you have that number, Rod?
Not square footage, but we're gonna, whatever is left over in that, we're gonna go try to get the DA's office as well. Replacing carpeting.
That carpeting over there is, uh, two thousand and two, so it's, it's starting to see its wear on it.
How about at the Justice Center, uh, the havoc in the controls? Is there another part of that?
Yes, there'll be another part next year. One, one section will be controls and boilers, and then it'll be the heating, the.
Chillers.
And then the chillers will be next year.
But if we, is it gonna be like the roof, we put it off and it's gonna double in price? Is there a price we can put on that to see if we should do it at the same time?
We've gone.
Seems like everything we put off a year doubles.
You know, one of our strategies is to bid that one whole project and just phase it in as one bid. But phase in, phase, uh, get a bid, current bid, but phase one will be done in twenty-six, phase two in twenty twenty-seven.
But what, do you know what that other part is? Because it, another five hundred thousand, wasn't it, or so?
Be about one point two million.
So another four or five, but I mean, the longer we put it off, it's gonna, like the roof.
An additional one point two.
It'll be an additional one point two.
Two millions.
It's two point two.
Two point two for the middle, yes.
For all of it.
Right.
So we're not even doing half and, and we're gonna get nailed again.
We're getting the half, the, we're splitting the boilers and the chiller section, so.
So next year it'll be one point three million with lock, and it'll go up to one point eight. So I mean, is there some way we can find out how to save some money and not waste waiting?
That's where we're gonna get that bid out, that bid out next year for the whole project and do it that way and finance it the other way.
Seems like we're putting stuff off when we sit in here with seventeen million dollars that we could do it, because we still have our fifty percent.
We only have eight, eight million of that spendable.
It says seventeen and thirty-one. We got fourteen. We get down to fifty, don't we?
Of that, a lot of that's dedicated already. There's eight million.
But it's not in the ondest.
I, I got another carpeting question.
In the ondest.
Pricing for the child support area, but we're figuring that we're gonna have enough money left to do the district attorney's office. Aren't we pricing it kind of high? Because I have to assume that we've priced it to probably do both. I mean, I would, I would hope that our bids on something would be closer than saying, hey, we've got twice as much carpet when we get done. I, I would expect at the county level, our bids to be a little closer than saying, hey, we think we'll be able to do twice as much instead of half as much.
Right. When we go, when we put these numbers together, we do go out there, get budgetary bids. When we get our solid bids in, once we go up for bid, many times are much lower. Example of that would be the grandstands. Grandstands, that's near an estimate. On that for budgetary, we're almost two point three million dollars for the grandstand. It came in at a million dollars, a little over a million dollars for the grandstand. And the same people giving us the budgetary bids for that were the ones that bid on it. So by the savings at that, when they came in for the hard bid, I couldn't tell you.
That's what we have.
But then we're gonna just, we're gonna spend the forty-five thousand anyway. I mean, if we're gonna go do the district attorney's office, if the bid comes in at half of that, we've budgeted forty-five thousand. So we're just gonna spend it instead of saying, we budgeted for the child support area.
Our current numbers that we have are looking at forty-five thousand for that child area. If I just come in last, we try to do more with what we have. Next slide. Uh, extra, these are the outside agencies. These twenty twenty-five moves were, Mo was awarded. Your request came in, um, on the next one right here. These are the differences, and this is what I'm recommending for the budget. Um, you could see uh, economic development is flat at sixty-five. The museum, the historical society came in with a seven thousand dollar increase. I kept it flat at sixty. Uh, kinship was the same, West Cap's the same. Fair Society was, um, almost at forty-eight thousand. Removing the, the bleachers and the awards that are now paid by the state allocation on the sixteen thousand, seven fifty-one. Tourism came in with an ask of thirty thousand dollar increase. I kept them flat at seventy-five to do what they're doing with their initiative or rental house taxes with the municipalities. West Coast, uh, regional planning, that is a formula, and that's the formula for this year for the board. So that was my recommendation for this year. Next slide. Capital improvement plans, uh, through twenty twenty-four, most of the CIP was funded with ARPA money, uh, starting the debt program. We started that in twenty twenty-five with bonding table. Twenty twenty-six, we are gonna use all of these other different funding sources, our general fund, the P-TAG, portion of the recycling special charge. The recycling center and then debt financing for our two point two five million with that. As I said, I recommend using everything for that. Our loans look favorable at four point five. You know, we'll know Thursday if they cut interest rates again for us. So that's still coming on the horizon. Again, borrowing in the two point two five keeps our levy stable, as you could saw on the, you saw on the other slide with keeping our mill rate down, um, with that. Um, and retaining the majority of our general fund for the future needs and unforeseen circumstances. Next slide. October, October board meeting, uh, looking at any recommendations, um, to the administrator, um, the agents that we see. Um, so we can get those in the budget or talk to all my committees. Right now, we have the countywide expenses kind of solidified, uh, employee-related FTEs, raised benefits, so in on WPPA. Non-employee related operations, professional insurance, some of those numbers coming a bit later in October and the, um, to get those final numbers on our premiums. Next slide. In October, I'll find, I'll present the final budget, um, for twenty twenty-six. Consider any additional things that come up through committees. Uh, we'll do the resolution for the public hearing. The meeting in November will be on a Wednesday. We're looking at the public hearing at one o'clock. And the board meeting starting at one thirty in the afternoon on that Wednesday, due to, we can't run past five o'clock due to our rules of order or. Next slide. And that's where we stand right now. That's Brad.
I may have looked down wrong, but I believe you said we've budgeted for the grandstand in the budget, two point three million dollars.
That was actually last year's budget.
Oh, last year's budget, okay. So what have we put in it for this year's budget?
Running off last year's budget, it'll be a carryover fund.
So we're carrying over one point three million dollars. Why do we need to borrow any money for the grandstand if it's gonna cost us a million?
It's in, we, we budgeted, that was in the budget for last year. So we're not borrowing any money next year for the grand.
That money carried over.
That money will carry over.
So we're carrying two point three million over.
It's the one.
What? What's that?
Saying that we won't know that until the, after December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. We, we won't know the outcome overall for the county.
Overall for where we end up.
Maybe it's just me that's lost, but if we budgeted two point three million dollars last year and we're carrying it over, we should have two point three million dollars carried over to this budget for the grandstands from last year's budget.
Right. It won't show up in this budget until June, when we do the carryover resolution to see where that number is.
It should be at two point three million dollars if that's what we budgeted for, I would think. So, but I guess my question is, is where's the, where's, if it's gonna cost us a million and we budgeted a year ago two point three, where is the other one point three million dollars?
Still be in allocated funds for the project moving forward and.
It's dedicated, right. Okay, I'm fine with that, but at the end of the day, my question is, is where are that one point three million dollars going? Because it's in a dedicated fund. But if we get a bid of one dollars, that one point three million dollars is going to, I'm assuming, going to go back into the general fund as not being used.
Right. Well, you, you look at this year and you look at the audit that happened, right? I mean, we had the dam project that's one point dollars that hopefully we'll get back, we'll get our money back in grant funding, so that'll be a positive. We'll know much more on the general fund when that all comes back in there, and we'll have the same discussion next year then, how much to draw down the general fund. Not only to maintain our debt service, but only as, as well as to, um, keep our general fund down for it's manageable and at a proper level, so.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is where does that one point three million dollars disappear to? Because it seems like it's just going into thin air to be spent wherever.
So if I could have to clarify, um, I think the original bid was two point three. For the twenty twenty-five budget, we have one point, my eyes aren't so good, one, one point two five million. So the budget for twenty-five is a lot closer to what we're actually gonna, we're planning to expend on this. And if there is any overage, it'll, as someone suggested, assuming that the county is overall in a surplus relationship, it'll go to the general.
So it was one point two five and not really two point three.
That, I think Mo was trying to illustrate that a lot of times we get inflated initial bids. And then when push comes to shove and folks are competing, the deals get better for us. And this is a great, you know, great example of that.
Okay.
I'd like, uh, CIP, are we gonna, can we get a list and go back over that and what's been done, not done like we did with P-TAG? To see where we're at? Because the CIP, I mean, we've, we've done a bunch of those projects.
Didn't.
It's a five-year one, is it correct?
Right, because you.
So we have something to slash off from this year.
Right, because what you'll see in your, what you're seeing in your packet is, is twenty-six through thirty.
Is it? These are the new ones from each committee?
In, in the, in the, in the minute, in the meeting packet, it, it shows your CIPs in there.
Does it have the whole new one?
Yes. With the exception of two that have, um, need additional information for.
Okay. But you, you made the list, checked it off.
What's done and moved and then through the five-year.
They're not dragging out there forever. All right.
And then we move.
Brad, did you have a question?
Four to twenty-six are moved into twenty-six.
Yeah, it's, it's more just a question for Mo and our finance director. So getting back to Brad on the grandstand and that one point three million and the budget being two whatever. So the question I have is, if throughout the year there are other line items within the budget that go over budget, at the end of the year, can, uh, when we know for sure what the grandstand's gonna come in at, we can do a resolution to reallocate those, uh, that excess? If there is excess, I'm assuming there is, from the grandstand to offset any other potential budget overages, would that be correct?
Well, yeah, at the, at the end of the day, it's, at the end of the day, it's the bottom line.
Yeah.
So if you're over under on which line item on that.
You do a transfer.
We do a transfer. And it, what, what happens with the, with the grandstand, remember the, the, the fair put up their hundred and eighty-one thousand and change upfront was their portion upfront of money, but then we have a payment plan for the remaining hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we have to carry then for the next, uh, ten years on that debt.
Do we know in, in here from the employee side of things, I mean, do we know what the average cost of living increase is gonna be across the board for employees yet or not?
We're looking at two point five total at this point. We are waiting on one number from social securities. Have been hinting that they might raise their allocation of social security, and we want to make, make sure we're maintaining, um, that across the board also. Or as close as we can to that within parameters.
So is that two point five across the board for everybody that's a whole county employee, or is there employees that get more than the two point five?
It's two point five for everyone, with the exception of WPPA, because they have a different structure.
But it doesn't happen all.
And gold on each manner is not part of that. Also, we don't call it a cost of living increase. It's a market adjustment so that our pay is commensurate with the market for each position. So we call it a market adjustment now as opposed to a cost of living increase. Additionally, the cost of living increase itself isn't two point five percent. There are movements, the total wage adjustment for employees is two point five percent across the year. There are, it's split out per HR reasons. So it's slightly different than that.
Any else?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Mo, I appreciate the way you laid this out, because I really do understand it well. And I'm glad you haven't thirty thousand with you yet. Okay. It's pretty clear. It's pretty laid out on.
Okay, I got one more question, James.
Go ahead.
So within the budget, is the zoning compliance technician still accounted for in the?
Yes.
So we're not following through with resolution four twenty-four then?
Yes, we are.
I'd said we were gonna get rid of them if we didn't bring in close to two hundred thousand over two years, and we've brought in five thousand.
The information passed, the information given at the last board meeting, uh, shows that expenditures were ninety-five thousand. The information passed, the information given at the last board meeting shows that expenditures were ninety five thousand. Revenue's coming in, we're a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
But we only gave out an extra forty permits in, in, in the difference of the year, so. I don't think that my additional forty permits that land and water zoning gave out really increased to a hundred and eleven thousand. I think it came from, okay, somebody handing out less permits.
The position itself that handed out those permits brought in the revenue of a hundred and twelve thousand. The potential savings by bringing those hundred and fifty to, I might have that number wrong. Cases into compliance, saved an average of, forgive me, I don't remember my notes, but they were in the range of seven hundred and fifty to twenty five hundred dollars per incident, if not higher, if they had to go to court on projected savings.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet, I'll just stay up here if you're going to bring the.
Now we're going to bring in resolution, resolutions, twenty five, twenty five is. Or. Proposal.
Did we think about page, page ten on this slide, recycling or is that separate? Yes, did we talk about this? I think that's what we're.
Yes, we're.
Okay.
Waiting for that for the resolution.
Hold that we bring discussion, resolution twenty twenty five to the floor for discussion.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to bring resolution twenty five, twenty five to the floor for discussion. All in favor?
I do.
Okay.
Next slide. As we talked at the last board meeting, took the and Supervisor Ruck, I'm looking at, kind of what Pierce County did on properties, Pierce County is, does their a special charge on properties that have more than ten thousand dollars of improvement on it? We looked at the different ones with the special charge for applied to G one, G two, G three. But where we landed was improvements of greater than fifty thousand. If we went to twenty five thousand, it eliminated eighteen hundred and four properties. Thirty thousand was about two thousand sixty one. Forty thousand was twenty five, twenty two, and fifty thousand was two thousand nine hundred and sixty six properties. With the fee, that's about a hundred and three thousand dollars, so that kept us at that seven fifty. And what that did was give us a better representation of properties that we felt were going to produce recycling. So we narrowed that band and did that to go to that spot right there. That does net us costs of about seven hundred and forty three thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. Special charge assessed in twenty twenty five, twenty seven and twenty eight are actually for tax years, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. Of that, we'll use three ninety seven for capital projects, funding of the recycling center. And three hundred and forty six thousand for operation. Re-reviewed prior to twenty twenty eight. And the resolution, we put it in for three years so we could establish that fund to get it up and running with that. Please, a next slide.
Can I have a question on that?
Absolutely.
So the three forty six for operations each year, that's already in the budget. Right, because we pay that every year.
Right, in past years, that's levy, now it's special fund.
So where's the three forty six that was levy going?
That went back to other operations within the county to help offset employee costs.
Okay, why wasn't that kept in recycling to finish the recycling, help finish the recycling projects that needed to be done? Because we already, all that other stuff in the county was funded already. Right?
We advanced the rest of the equipment, next slide. What we did was we took the, not on that slide. We advanced the rest of the recycling project, the sort line, the glass container, the other stuff. And are utilizing part of the special project, special fund and drawing down the general fund to advance that to next year. So we're not spreading it out over a couple of years. So all that got advanced to finish that project up next year with the equipment.
That's this, this one, this slide.
That's probably the next slide, yeah.
So what happened to the eight hundred and thirty two thousand that we collected in twenty twenty five?
Uh, next slide. This is just, this is just operating costs right now. Goes through the recycling center, employee costs and what's related to employee costs, next slide. Of the eight hundred thousand, part of it was used for operations, the majority of it came out of the fiber sort line. The seven hundred and twenty five thousand came out of the fiber sort line. With that, the mini loader, a hundred and four thousand came out of project costs that was baked into the project to start out with.
So that's all what was spent this year then?
That was just spent this year. All we're advancing is additional sort line, the truck, more bins, the forklift, conveyor. And the operator, that was going to be spread out over a couple of years. So we're advancing that up there and utilizing the general fund and part of that special assessment to pay that off. We get that project complete next year.
So to be complete then?
Yes.
That's what I was just going to look at the capital improvement plan to see what else is planned for there.
Then after that, it's just a matter of programming, you know, the trucks every so many years and the normal update stuff.
I have a question on how fifty thousand dollars as being exemption number, how that was arrived at? Where did that number come from?
As we look at operational costs of what the fee would bring in, the number we, we had a hit was about three quarters of a million dollars for operations of the recycling center and building the fund at a constant rate, not a huge rate, but just the constant rate to the future. With that though, that was our target, was to take those properties and narrow it down to see what was collecting, what would generate recycling. So to try to take off that improvement that was a small shed on a vacant lot for those items that don't produce recycling.
So, I mean, there are definitely homes, residential homes in Pope County that are assessed less than fifty thousand dollars. So then they're, they're still able to use the service and, and we want everybody to use the service, right?
Right.
But they're getting exempted as well as the shed on the lot or the sign on the highway and.
Correct.
Everything, I mean, if you live in a home that's, you know, only valued at fifty thousand dollars, you probably don't have a lot of money, I'm going to guess, with, you know, the cost of the real estate. You know, so I guess that's, you know, that's just a comment that I guess it'll help those people out, you know?
Probably put it back so everybody pays the same.
So are we?
Yeah.
Our apartment building's still just paying the thirty five dollars as well rather than, I mean, they're creating a lot more recycling than a single family home, so.
It's on the parcel, we don't have a mechanism to charge it by the address of the apartment.
No.
So we're really not charging everybody thirty five dollars, so I'll come back to this, you said that the mill rate was down this year. So to generate seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, it would take a fraction of a mill rate across the board. And there would not be a fee. Because at the end of the day, this is a tax that everybody pays and we're calling it something fancy and calling it a fee. But I still have to pay it because if I don't pay my thirty five dollars for three years in a row, the county is going to come and take my property for a hundred and five dollars of back taxes. So we could spread that across every taxpayer and every taxpayer, every parcel would pay about a buck and a half a piece.
But on, on, by statute, we don't have the ability to raise.
And then councilor has an issue with this, calling it taxes.
So just a point of clarity, it is absolutely not a tax, it is a fee, it is not assessed as a tax if you don't pay. If you decide that you're not going to pay the entire amount owed to the county, the special fees get paid first, so you would end up paying the thirty five dollar fee. You would not end up paying your tax and that would ultimately result in exactly what you said, so that is true, but there are nuances to what you're saying that are slightly incorrect, so the, the.
It's still a hundred and five dollars.
You can have an opinion about whether it's using different words for the same thing. Legally, it is a different thing, it is a fee as opposed to a tax, and that is, to Fran's question, why trying to adjust the amount to try to eliminate properties that aren't producing recycling while retaining as many properties as we can that are producing recycling is what allows that fee to stay in place. Now, to your point, apartment buildings are paying on that one parcel, that is true. Counties across the state are running into that problem as Administrator Norby pointed out. There are issues with how we are able to capture the usage of the facility. And that is a known problem and if and when we ever have the information available to us that can allow us to more narrowly tailor the fee, then I assume both Pope County and other counties would be more than willing to, to address it. I, I'm not saying it's not a valid concern, it certainly is, and it's something that across the state, counties are trying to deal with. But my point being, the tailoring that staff is recommending doesn't require you to do it, you could lower it to Supervisor Duncanson's point, lower it from fifty, there are residential properties that we are potentially eliminating. It's trying to balance to get the fee to apply to as many properties that are going to utilize the service as possible.
And we knew that from the start, not primarily.
I think.
We should have a point of order.
Go ahead.
We're, we're actually not in a committee of the whole here. We're in our business meeting. By our rules of order, you get to speak once to the resolution until everyone has spoken. So you need to be recognized by the chair and we can't have conversation. You, you bring your debate to the floor, to the body. And you speak only to the resolution that we're on, and if you want to change something, move it and change it. Don't speak to it.
During the.
Yeah, so get recognized by the chair and get it back to the business meeting.
Fran, did you have something?
No, it's been answered, it was answered with some comments.
I just have one question, can we have a clarification what G one, G two and G three properties are?
Residential, commercial and manufacturing.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Now we let him go to the, okay.
I think the motion to move on the resolution.
Well, made the movement of the resolution.
I'll second it.
And seconded.
Maybe a roll call.
On this particular vote, because it is technically amending the budget for twenty twenty five.
Two thirds?
It's the two thirds.
Hey, we need two thirds. Roll call is in order.
Doug Rowdy. Steve Wornall.
Yes.
Pam Garvey.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly.
No.
Jeremy Hall.
No.
Kim O'Connell.
No.
Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Fran Duncanson.
Yes.
Russ Arkand.
Yes.
Heath Karpinski.
Yes.
John Bonaprise.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
No.
And Jay Luke.
Yes.
Five to ten. That's five no's and ten yeses, so it passes with two thirds.
Okay. Change the resolution. Twenty seven, twenty five.
Bring it to the floor for discussion.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to bring it to discussion. Okay, it's open for discussion.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Legal counsel, I'm referring to line seventeen. Ten twenty four was not originally designed for retention bonuses for medical first responders. Paid for their training in their books only. Does this verbiage that we use here, keep the first responder along with the fire that's added now? So that we have both using the money up and you following me or?
So, uh, resolution ten twenty four, and I believe three different pockets of funding, there was thirty thousand dollars for the train, that sort of training for emergency first responders. Then there was thirty thousand dollars for retention bonuses, and then there was ten thousand dollars for something else and I don't remember.
I was to go, it was eight thousand, eighty one hundred, I think, to go to Lisa McMahon for additional training related.
Sure, so the, this takes that thirty thousand dollar, that one of the two thirty thousand dollar pockets and allows it to be allocated now to firefighters who complete the requisite training and meet the parameters as set out in this particular resolution. Though it, it doesn't change anything with the funding for the training. It only impacts that thirty thousand dollar section that would otherwise have been used for retention of E F T.
So the ten twenty four language stands and the thirty thousand dollar will be used for first responder and firefighter.
Correct, that is the intent of.
Question I have.
And then recommendation came out of Public Works Public Safety to change line twenty two to read have passed level entry trainings A and B. That was the recommendation out of Public Works Public Safety.
Should someone, I suppose not at this time because we're in discussion, but someone would need to move on that to amend the resolution.
Someone could move the resolution with a proposed amendment or theoretically someone could move the resolution and then after it gets seconded, someone could move to amend during the discussion. It would probably be easier to move it with the recommended amendment, I believe the purpose of the recommended amendment was some clarification from our emergency management coordinator specifying that both of those trainings are required. And so therefore it should be specified in the resolution.
Do you have something, Kevin? Do you have a question?
No, I was, I'm good, I'm good.
Anybody else want to comment on this?
Can I have a second round or being everybody else?
Well, if no one else has a comment, go ahead.
Lisa's taken a, a special interest in this and her and I really worked long on this thing and she's really done some excellent research as to retainability for fire departments, this thing got generated from all in Balsam Lake here. Balsam Lake Fire Department is struggling with membership. We have the biggest investment in the county right here. We need firefighters here in Balsam Lake, but in fairness, it had to go across all the departments of the county. So Lisa's done some research, it's a hundred and seventy page, I was going to have her print it for me until I heard it was a hundred and seventy pages, but she a study's been done on retention, what it takes to keep firefighters on the departments. And we all know there's struggles in departments, I've been through some on hers. But the schools are starting programs in Osceola. You go to a class and they have, they cover first responders, firefighters, E M Ts, nurses and police, I believe, down there. Or in high school, they start, if they're interested in this, you can come in and they have presenters come in and talk to them about that field. So there's an effort to get more people interested, you know, at the high school level so they could probably join a department, be a cadet and eventually be a firefighter. probably join a department, be a cadet and eventually be a firefighter. And for the record, I can't vote on this, uh, because I have a relative that could qualify. So corporate counsel has advised me that I can't vote on.
Hi, go ahead, counsel.
Just for a couple of things on that specific topic, if anyone else feels like they have any conflict of interest, please let the chair know. In order for this vote to pass, and I, I apologize, I said a two thirds vote on the last resolution. I was thinking about this resolution. That's my mistake. Last resolution was a simple majority. This resolution is a budget modification amendment, so this resolution requires two thirds of a vote. Reason it's important that you make that clear and just don't, uh, abstain from voting is because our rules of order require the chair to excuse you from voting and that then lowers the requirement for the two thirds. So if that makes sense, if anyone else feels like they have a conflict or in, of interest, uh, please be recognized and allow the chair to excuse you from voting so that, uh, we don't run into any issues with the passing of a, a budget amendment.
Okay.
Just for clarification, okay, so this is gonna be added to this year's budget, not the new budget.
Because
And that's why it needs the two thirds, just, I need to
Correct. Because the twenty twenty-five budget was already passed with this amount in consideration for that specific purpose. We are amending the twenty twenty-five budget to allow the reallocation of this amount to a different use.
Oh, oh, I, so it's just basically is to add the other use is why we're modifying it. Okay.
Budget neutral.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Getting two.
Chair, I'll, you can abstain. I'm gonna abstain from
Okay, we'll make that decision when it's time to vote and I'll, I'll just excuse the, the two that wish to abstain. That way their count will not be counted as a vote. Well, yeah.
Did I, can I make the motion then?
Oh.
I could make the motion, uh, you do twenty-seven, twenty-five with the amendment on line twenty-two to add level A, B training. Is that what was, go in there?
I'll second A and B.
Level training, yes.
Motion made and seconded, we'll need, with the amendment. We need a roll call vote.
And Kim, just to clarify, that was approval and the amendment or just the amendment?
Yeah.
No, no, approval of the whole and
With the amendment.
With the amendment, right?
With the amendment.
Yeah.
The second.
Any other? Everybody clear on that? Don't see any noes, just see a bunch of bombers. Okay, with the two excused supervisors, we need a roll call.
Okay, Pam Garvey?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
Yeah.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
Tony Johnson?
Yes.
Francis Duncanson?
Yes.
Russ Arkand?
Yes.
Heath Karpinski?
Yes.
John Bonner Prize?
Yes.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
And Jay Luke?
Yes. Okay, a real moment. Did you have an announcement on that? Was it unanimous? Uh, thirteen. All right. Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-five is
Motion to bring it to the floor for debate.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring it to the floor for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side. Issues?
Yeah, this is the resolution to start the, um, our, our bonding process, um, like we did last year. This is the initial one to go out for, uh, see public bids on our interest rates and that. That kind of thing. This keeps our, our levy stable, um, and our mill rate the same without dropping or losing levy.
Hey, any more, any discussion on it?
Uh, how did they vote in general government? You remember on this, is it unanimous, sir?
It was recommended.
For one.
For one. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-eight, twenty-five as presented.
Prior to this vote requires a three quarters.
Roll call.
Um, so actually the last roll call vote was supposed to start with Steve because we rotate, but because he was recused, so I'm gonna start with Pam Garvey again because that's who it's supposed to be.
Very good.
So, sure. Pam Garvey?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Dan Ruck?
Yes.
Sharon Kelly?
I'm so torn on this one. I'll say yes reluctantly.
Jeremy Hall?
No.
Kim O'Connell?
No.
Tony Johnson?
Yes.
Fran Duncanson?
Yes.
Russ Arkand?
Yes.
Heath Karpinski?
Yes.
John Bonner Prize?
Yes.
Brad Olson?
No.
Doug Rowdy?
Yes.
Steve Orndall?
Yes.
And Jay Luke?
Yes.
That's exactly, we got three noes and twelve yeses. That's exactly three quarters to pass. Gotta make sure we're mathing correctly.
Moving on to number twelve, no appointments. Yeah, so we'll move on to thirteen appointments with the county administrator, if you have any.
I do not have any appointments.
No appointments. Uh, I think the report that we have is all pretty much discussed in in our, uh, program. So anyway, I have nothing. County board report?
Uh, really quickly, um, as I said in the other committees, economics supported a great job on their state audit, audit. They do the SNAP, uh, program and as you know, the federal government has an error rate. If it's above six, they penalize the states coming up. Um, our error rate was point eight-eight percent on payment error and case error rate was one point four nine and we are in a consortium of ten other counties. The, um, the ones pulled for audits from Polk County were a hundred percent correct, so my hat's off to that group. Um, A D R C Transportation Open House is at the government center here for A D R C Friday, September nineteenth. Two to four, they're having their program. Um, the updated playground equipment has been installed at Apple River Campground and the, uh, revenue is up over eighty percent there with our new systems out there. So that's a very positive out there. It's been cleaned up, um, out there. So if you get a chance to go through that campground, it's, it's looking really good and we're getting, um, a lot of campers through there. And as I stated earlier, August was, uh, sales tax dropped three percent. Um, should be getting September's numbers here shortly and then I'll be done at the W C A conference, um, at the beginning of next week. That's all I have, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, as a clerk, what do you have?
Um, I just have a couple of updates, so I'm gonna be going on leave probably relatively soon. Um, I'm hoping to make it to the last Environmental Services at the beginning of next, uh, next week or the week after, but we'll see. Um, so I wanted to mention a couple of things, um, just making sure that anything for agendas and agenda items are to the clerk's office. Um, I send out the agenda deadline calendar every week with all the other agendas that come out. Just making sure to hit those deadlines because I will not be there. So my staff will be taking that on extra. Um, the main thing that I wanna touch on is elections. Uh, you all will be running next year if you're so inclined for twenty twenty-six. Uh, Katie will provide the packets for, um, your nomination papers, declaration of candidacy, those types of things in November. But I wanted to touch on it early just so you're thinking about it. The main thing is anybody that is not interested in running again needs to file a declaration of non-candidacy. If you do not file this in time, it extends the deadline, which is already a time crunch. So making sure to get those papers from our office. Um, you cannot start circulating nomination papers until December first and those need to be turned in to us by January sixth. Like I said, we will provide the packets like we have every year. Um, and then of course, anybody that is a public member that wants to run against anybody else, um, they can get those packets in our office as well. So we're not just providing it to supervisors, we are providing it to the public as well. Anybody can get them from our office. I made them today. So they are ready to go as soon as that December deadline hits.
Okay, that good. Announcements of any supervisor? Other than I'll make an announcement at John's birthday party that has been listed, uh, or wanders on the Sunday, one, Saturday, one to five. Saturday, the
The Saturday.
The twentieth. The twentieth.
Everybody's invited. Do you and my kids are putting on.
Right, it's, uh, it's listed as on our, our, our website.
The notice is already posted for a possible quorum, so has been, has been noticed already. So three, two, ten.
Fran, do you have something?
Uh, just very quick, I attended the open house at Golden Age Manor for the new hospice suite there. There were a lot of people there, uh, very interested in it. Um, there was a ribbon cutting snacks. And there also were, Adory had invited and set up a number of local vendors of interest to people, uh, facing, uh, that situation in their lives. So I was glad I went and, uh, it was very good. Uh, Gay went as well. Good event.
I was there today and it is, the improvements on nineteen fifty buildings are just awesome. People that work, they're working there for the money. They're just so dedicated at helping people. So I'll be leaving at six o'clock on Sunday morning for Wisconsin County Association Annual Meeting Wisconsin Dells and there'll be six resolutions introduced from Polk County that I introduced at the, at the steering committees and they all passed without any descending votes. So I'm pretty hopeful that, uh, we're gonna, three of them are from the H H and, uh, one is, uh, extra funding from our court system. I think two of them are going. Hopefully, uh, Polk County will be doing well at, uh, state convention.
I have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
We hosted the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission meeting this last week here in Polk County. It's, there's seven counties that make up that, um, that commission and we take turns, uh, hosting and like once here or once every other year. And it was interesting, some of the information they shared and one thing that to me that was just shocking was, uh, the population estimates for, by county and Polk County. And I, and I had a note on it and forgot to bring it, but, um, the estimates for Polk County, the population they're estimating is gonna go down by twenty-three percent over the next ten years, I believe it is. And it was the biggest drop of all of the counties in West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning area. Far, there wasn't another county that even been close at all. So it's kind of interesting. And some of that is because of our aging population here in Polk County. And, uh, but it's something for us to think about as we talk about housing and we talk about what the needs in the county are. Because we're different than those up when the, the other six counties, um, that are growing and it's something for us to think about.
Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn all in favor?